Excellent, I'm taken from that, but we are good to go. I'm looking for quorum.
Yes, you have core Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I will call this meeting for order. We're now meeting as committee of the whole. Is there any declaration of interest, accumulary or otherwise? Seeing none, again, I'll ask you to declare if one comes up during the course of the meeting. Item number three is business arising from the minutes, but councillor McQueen, I wonder if I might ask your lead to change it up a little bit so that we can deal with our guests who are here for delegation. They were scheduled for 10 o'clock. Would that be okay with you? Thank you very much. And that said, then we'll turn to item number four, our delegation from the Nuclear Innovation Institute. We welcome Jessica Lindhorn, Director of the Clean Energy Frontier Program, and Chad Richards, Director of the Net Zero Partnerships, and they're talking about preparing for an electric vehicle future. Welcome folks.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm going to share my screen to get started with our delegation and my colleague, Chad Richards is on the line and he's going to kick it off for us.
Yeah, that's great. Unfortunately, my camera is facing the wrong way. And if in the interest of time, I'm just going to turn off my camera and use my voice. Anyway, so thank you very much, Mr. Warden and council. It's great to be here today. Again, following up on a meeting that I met with, I was here before council in, I guess it was last year. It's kind of crazy how time has flown, but to introduce you to the Clean Energy Frontier Program, program that we're, that we have here at the Nuclear Innovation Institute. The program is now led by Jessica Lindhorn, my colleague here today. And I'm heading up a new program over at the Nuclear Innovation Institute. But today we're here to talk about a report that the Clean Energy Frontier Program conducted earlier this year called Plugging In: Why Bruce Gray and Huron Must Prepare for an Electric Vehicle Future. And just because, you know, the stars all aligned today is actually World EV Day. So, you know, it's very timely that we're here today to talk about this. And, you know, why, why these discussions around electric vehicles matter. So to that point, our, our, our report, as I mentioned, plugging in, was led by the Nuclear Innovation Institute's Clean Energy Frontier Program. And we partnered with, with Plug and Drive, which is a leader in the EV industry. They have a very strong network of current EV drivers and, you know, give us really a lot of opportunities to tap into the sentiments of people who are currently driving EVs. And really why we're here to talk to you as a municipal government today, it, it's really twofold. One, we've seen municipalities, municipal governments be active in the installation of EV charging infrastructure. And we want to make sure that, you know, as if municipal governments around our region are considering, continuing to be active in installing EV infrastructure, that those decisions are backed up by really solid data on where these charging stations have the most impact. And the second, the second opportunity is really that it becomes an economic development opportunity. And, you know, I look at things like Gray County's climate change action plan. You know, these are things that you as a municipality are active in. And we want to make sure that, you know, as you move forward within this space, that these decisions, you have all available data that's out there available to you and, and making really truly informed decisions. So to give some further context on why this matters to our region here in Bruce Gray and Huron, which we call the, we like to call the Clean Energy Frontier Region, is it really that our region depends on tourism? So for, for years, residents of Bruce Gray and Huron have traveled to and from work in their cars. So, you know, as a vast rural region, it's not just people driving to the region. Once you're here, you have to drive to and from work. It's just the nature of living in a vast rural area. And also, our visitors to the region largely arrive here the same way they drive. And, but in that, in that space, a shift is underway. The governments are now opposing, imposing deadlines to eliminate the sale of internal combustion engines. Now, I like to say again, our timing is just majestic with this report. The day that our report was released was actually the same day that the Government of Canada announced a new, a new requirement or a new target of having 100% of internal combustion passenger vehicle sales be, be zero emission by the year 2035. So these governments are moving forward in this direction and trying to influence change. And it's not just governments that are imposing these deadlines and, you know, making these targets and promises. The industry, the auto industry itself is, is banking on an all-electric future. And that's really a critical thing that we haven't seen in the past. There's been a lot of talk about EVs and targets and where they could go. But the auto industry has taken notice and they've put consumers on notice. I look at, you know, Ford in a, in a conversation about the future of the industry. Their CEO said that electric vehicles are the biggest opportunity for Ford since Henry Ford scaled the Model T. GM, which has committed to an all-electric future by 2035 in line with those targets, has said they have a zero crashes, zero emissions and zero congestion plan. And they, their CEO has, you know, made it very clear that they want to put everyone, they want to be part of the solution to climate change by putting everyone in an, in an electric vehicle. And those, those two things, the government, government imposed deadlines and auto industry taking note is influencing change in the passenger vehicle industry. So despite the pandemic where we saw vehicle sales around the world largely decline, 2020 became a record year for EV sales around the world. And so largely what this all boils down to is that if you look at where we're headed in the passenger vehicle industry, you know, it would be interesting to see, you know, no gas stations available to people driving internal combustion engines. So it all results in the fact that EV drivers are going to need access to public charging infrastructure.
Thanks for that, Chad, for kicking us off. So what we did as start of this study is we did have to do a real stocktaking and having a close look at the charging infrastructure that is in place in the tri-county region. And then actually, in fact, within the report, we do mention, we give a bit of a shout out to the city of Owen Sound for their commitment for the public access charging. And so we do see that we've got chargers behind the farmer's market and, and that's what we'd like to see more of. So here's a bit of a stocktake. We're, we're in really good shape. There's good infrastructure in place. So having a look at the, the data, what we did see, we did survey drivers through plug and drive. And we did see that the statistics here, so we are getting an understanding of who these drivers are in southwestern Ontario. And with that, we're learning too what their expectations are. So having a look at our current EV drivers and asking where they're taking their EVs. So what we see here, these statistics, their long weekend trips, about 56.5% of these EV drivers take that EV on their long weekends, 55% are taking them for day trips. And our road trips is about four evenings or more when we talk about road trips. So 37.5% are using their EVs. And certainly it matters where they're going and they're doing the research to understand where they can get that charge. So absolutely understanding that 70% told us they will only choose or give preference where they know they can get a public charge. This statistic is alarming to us, understanding we, with that stocktaking, we do have good infrastructure here. But still, 83% of drivers think it would be difficult or very difficult to get a charge in the tri-county region. Having a closer look at what drivers do want, what we have heard from the 528 drivers in Ontario, they're looking for that level three, 41% of these drivers are looking for that level three highway stop. And I like to consider this one as almost that traditional gas station. You pull over, you get fuel, you keep going. Your level three is a fast charge, you're looking for that highway stop charge. 36% are looking for that on street near an attraction downtown. And again, you know, what Owen Sound has done with the downtown location at the farmer's market, being able to land there, have your level two while maybe you go out for lunch. And 13% looking for that level two at an overnight accommodator. So again, just as we hear more and more about EVs and chargers and public charging, what does all of this mean? This is just a slide to give you a bit of context on your level one. So that's what we would see at home with the plugging in. So it does take about an hour for your eight kilometer right up to your level three. So again, looking at that fast, that fast charge. Level two is nice leisurely able to go to a restaurant, maybe visit the farmer's market or an art gallery while you're downtown. And that level two charge. So with that, I'm going to pass it back to Chad to kick us off. We do have seven recommendations and so we'll walk through these and then we'll look forward to answering any questions. Chad, did you want to lead us off? Adam Clark, is Chad still on the call?
I see he is not on the call.
Oh, shoot. Okay, that's no problem. I can take over for him. He must be having a technical difficulty. So let's continue through here. So our recommendation, so developing a clear and coordinated strategy, certainly. And this collaboration is really important. We know that collaboration is important when we find these efficiencies and reduce some costs. So keeping this opportunity in mind, looking at sharing our local expertise with EV technology is really better understanding. So there is lots of work happening right now, the evolution of batteries and understanding how this fits into a gray Bruce Huron winter, understanding what this could look like in our environment. Focusing on public charging infrastructure, so as I mentioned, that 41, over 41% are looking for this level three highway stop where you're, you're able to get that quick charge. So really keeping this in mind as we're moving forward with infrastructure. Again, you know, we think about our economic development offices in the tri-county and we have great partnerships with our local BIAs, with our chambers of commerce. So we're, and our businesses continuing to do that is really important. Again, working collaboratively, being strategic and installing those level two chargers so that there's that economic development opportunity for these drivers. Five is really interesting, recommendation five, it's continuing our partnership, working together. Wellington County has had real success in the work that they're doing. And there's a good network now of counties that are joining forces to continue to build that thoughtful charging station, that thoughtful network. And Wellington County has been using some of our data that we've collected through this report, which is wonderful to see. So again, going back to that alarming statistic, 85% feel that it's difficult or very difficult to get a charge. So our recommendation, we do need to continue to market our area. We have infrastructure, we're continuing to make investments in infrastructure. We need to make sure that drivers in southern Ontario recognize they can come up to Gray Bruce Huron and they can get a charge while they're up here. And then lastly, seven is again, is creating awareness with our local businesses, specific local mechanics, really helping the industry understand that this shift is coming. We have, you know, as Chad mentioned early in the delegation, we have deadlines imposed now. We're seeing manufacturers take this leap. So it is coming and we want to make sure that our local businesses are aware and successful. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and thank you very much for having us join you today.
Thank you very much, Jessica. I wonder if we could go back to.
I will note, Mr. Warden, Chad has rejoined us.
Oh, and we can see you.
My apologies, my apologies, Warden. It's been a brutal morning for tech, I guess.
No worries at all. We have lots of questions from folks, starting with councillor Desai.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Warden. Thanks. Thank you, Jessica and Chad for the, for the presentation. Few questions I have. The first one is with regards to EV tourism, can you expand a little further on that? I know you had quite a few statistics. My question on that is how does EV tourism complement Gray County's climate, climate change action plan? That's my first question. I do have two other questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. So yeah, thanks so much for the question. We had, so I will let you know, we did have a really great meeting with your manager of climate change initiative, Linda, and a couple other people on Gray County staff to really to compliment the work that the team's doing on the climate change action plan. And within that action plan, we did note there is mention of EV tourism and recognizing the shift into electric vehicles. So we think that the data we're, we're bringing forward really is an opportunity for municipalities to make an informed choice. So as you are looking at investing in infrastructure, your economic development teams may be doing outreach to traditional gas stations or traditional businesses, helping understand this data and what these EV drivers want. We hope that that will be helpful and complimentary to the work that your team is doing.
Thank you very much. My next question is, and perhaps this is not the right place for this question. So feel free to tell me if that is the case. The, what is the cost of installing a level three charger? And one of the things that I'm very passionate about is asset management. So what would be the level of maintenance that is then required on a regular basis to ensure that the EV charges don't fail in Gray County?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So what we are doing right now is sort of a phase two of this project is we are going back to plug and drive and asking for a little bit more detail on that. So I do appreciate that question and I will share, we've made this delegation to Bruce County and Huron County Council as well. And it's a common question that does come up. So we're looking forward to finding a little bit more about the cost of that infrastructure to help support a business case for that install. So as we find some of these average costs for install and some of this average revenue, because there is revenue associated, we're hoping to compile some further data and we will certainly share that with Gray County.
And if I may, if I may, if I may build on that, you know, there, there is presently funds from the federal government available to, to support those installations. The zero emission vehicle infrastructure, infrastructure program is funded out to 2024. I mean, nobody can predict the results of an election and what might happen if, if there were a change of government. But at present, NRCAN has a program to support that and municipal governments are eligible recipients of that funding. So, you know, it's, I guess, to highlight that municipal governments aren't on their own in this, in this transition and that funds exist to support those installs.
Sorry, I do have one final bit. Thank you, Warden Hicks. In December of 2019, the OTR legislature passed Bill 123, I believe it was, which it protect, reserved spaces for, or reserve charging spaces for electric vehicles only, which to me was a positive for EV, a minor victory perhaps. Is there further advocacy that, that you would be looking for, for further benefits for electric or EVs? The last question I have, and this ties into tourism a little bit again, is there a central inventory available online for determining where the charging station, charging stations exist? That's my final bit, and I will just say that this, the presentation was electrifying.
I will say, Jess rolls her eyes every time we talk about this stuff because I just break out the puns nonstop. So they, they, yeah, they, they drive themselves. So to your last question, through you, Warden, to councillor Desai, there is a, the, the report itself used, used publicly available information on a website known as Charge Hub, which has kind of been the industry recognized central place where EV charging stations are recognized. Content is, so you know, both verified by Charge Hub and user generated. So if you see a charging station, you can actually, when you use it, you know, identify if it's, you know, not working at the time. And it basically has a feed in loop from people who are using the charging stations. So, and then in terms of, you know, other EV advocacy, I think that it's important to note, the, the report itself kind of, kind of says that this, this transition is coming. You know, we were talking about 2035, you know, that is, that is 14 years away. But I think that the, the thing to highlight is that the sooner we start, the sooner, the, the more prepared we are for a future that is really at this point, you know, by all industry accounts inevitable. So, and, and really, I think there, the report does have a heavy focus on EV tourism. And obviously, you know, just given lower rates of adoption here in the region. But that said, you know, our residents of the region will soon be driving an increasing share of EVs. So I think that there is a, there's a service to residents and taxpayers here as well, down the road, down the road. There you go, I end with a pun.
To councillor Desai?
And that, that will be all. Thank you, Warden. Thanks.
Thank you. And by the number of hands I see up, I can see that this is a very easy conversation to get plugged into. Councillor Gamble, you're next.
Hey, thank you, Warden. I'm definitely in favor of nuclear energy. I don't want to sound negative on this. But where I work, I work with batteries a lot and I just don't see, unless there's a lot of new technology and battery life here in Gray County. They will not survive the winter. We have items of problems with them consistently all winter long. And I heard the other day that they're talking about putting heaters on the batteries, which of course just uses more energy. So my, my concern is that they don't, you know, the whole thing is exciting, the charging stations, whatnot. But let's get the technology solid behind it before we move on. And, and that's a major concern for my, my business agriculture. We have a lot of big equipment that take batteries. And I just don't see how electric's gonna, I know John Deere has tried to make a retro, but it's not working out well. We needed a lot of help in this technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment on that, Jessica or Chad?
I can make a quick comment. I think, you know, in the passenger, in the passenger vehicle space, I, I think that there's a difference between the passenger vehicle space and the heavy vehicle space. Heavy vehicles for sure, because you need a much larger battery to power the vehicle. And, you know, installing infrastructure around to keep the battery warmer, safe from conditions gets to be, you, you really, you really drive down efficiency, the larger the battery, the heavier the machine is, the less efficient it is. But in the passenger vehicle space, I think we're seeing a lot of advancements. I mean, I'm not a battery engineer or technologist by any means, but, you know, there is really an emerging space of a battery technology that's, that batteries are getting more efficient, more conditioned to winters. There is new technologies coming out, I swear, every day. And really, I think that it's, it's moving in the right direction. And I think that, you know, I think the writing is really on the wall that you have, you know, it's not just, you know, governments making these hopeful promises that the EV industry will win the day. It's the auto industry saying the EV industry is winning the day. And by 2035, we're not making internal combustion engines anymore. So that's, and that's, I think, you know, the dire warning from, from the auto industry and why we're saying, you know, getting, starting, starting the conversation now and getting prepared now is all, all the more important with those warnings from the auto industry itself.
Thank you for that. Councillor Keating, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to Jessica and Chad. In your report, you suggested 86% of current EV drivers, which suggests that it's difficult to, to get a charge here in Gray County, for example. So in an ideal world, how many stations should we have at this point in time that would meet the needs of the current number of EV drivers?
Through you, Mr. Warden. That's a very good question and I, I don't have a particular answer. And Chad, I'm not sure if you do either. But I do think that the understanding really of the, the, I think more so the alarming of it, that 83% thinking it's difficult or very difficult, it may just be that assumption of, oh, Gray Bruce Huron, oh, up that way. You know, if I go up to, to Blue Mountain or if I go to Owen Sound or over to Sable Beach, I'm probably not going to get a charge because it's a bit of a, an assumption that maybe we're just, we're not ready. So I can't comment on how we are doing in regards to, are we meeting a threshold or an expectation? I do see those numbers and I know the conversations with Chad or with Plug and Drive are, this is very good. You know, we are doing okay. Chad, did you have anything to add in regards to specifics? I'm not sure we have those projections.
Yeah, I would just, I would add on to that through you, Warden. That it's, I think it's less about a number and more about stations in impactful locations that this report emphasizes. So, you know, if you're going to install stations, they, they should be in places that are, you know, convenient and, and make sense for somebody driving an EV. And that will, that will have a bigger impact on the perception of the, the ease at which you can charge in the region than just a sheer number. I don't think that, that just, just, you know, having 200 is the, the answer. It's a matter of making sure that there's a strategic network of chargers that can get you from point A to point B in the region. And I think that's really, that's part of the work that's getting, that's undergoing, that's being undertaken by, but led by Wellington. And I know Gray County is part of that initiative as well, making sure that there is this seemingly corridor of charging stations that will really provide an impact. And I think once more initiatives like that and more chargers are in place in places that actually makes sense to charge at, then you'll, you'll, you'll see perception improve.
Thank you. Councillor Potter, you're next.
Thank you, and, and I will risk being the outsider here. But as much as I am all in favor of cleaner energy, I keep wondering why it's always the municipal taxpayers that are being asked to foot the bill for this. We've had several proposals in our own municipality. You know, the people that are making the money from this are the power industry, the automotive industry and so on. I'm not sure why private enterprise isn't jumping into this if it's such a great promise for the future. And my, my problem is that the municipal taxpayer is going to be on the hook for this for who knows how long. And with, with no end in sight. So I just wonder why, why private enterprise isn't jumping onto this and seeing the possibilities?
Can we comment there?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. So yeah, thank you very much for the, the comment. And, and this is certainly a conversation that has come up with our conversations with county councillors. And so what we see is right now, we see municipal governments installing chargers. And we're hopeful that our data can help municipalities as they continue that work to make informed decisions. Chad did mention granting money available. It's quite generous. So there is that availability. So we do, we do remind municipalities that, you know, this isn't necessarily coming from your tax base. This could be an opportunity to leverage that funding. And then I guess I'll, I'll close as well with saying that when we think about economic development, Chad and I had a conversation this morning. There's, there's lots of opportunity to go and have that, do that traditional, the business retention and expansion interviews with your traditional gas stations, with owners and operators in your communities and ask if there's some, if there's a way you can support them as they transition to charging stations rather than using gas. So there's different conversations that can be, can be started. But for now, you know, our, our data is really the opportunity to share with the municipalities because we do see municipalities in this space of installing chargers.
I, I agree that, that helping to coordinate this and facilitate it might be a good role for municipality. But I remind you that those grant programs at the federal and provincial level are paid for by the same taxpayers that pay our taxes. So there's no real advantage to that.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Mill, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I, I share councillor Gamble's concern as an old farmer running some old equipment. It's, it's, it drives a bit of anxiety here. I have trouble now finding a mechanic that knows what a carburetor is or how to set a set of points on a gas motor. But this is only going to make it worse. But nonetheless, the whole discussion here this morning has sparked a question. Okay, you got that. Good. Is, is the, is the grid infrastructure, the basic grid infrastructure in Gray Bruce Huron ready for all these charging stations? I mean, I read articles saying that it is and others say it is. Do you folks have any insight into that?
You know, without, through you, Mr. Warden, without, you know, preempting conversations with our friends at Westario and Hydro One, I think that for level, for instance, for level two charging stations, they're, they're essentially a plug and play type exercise. They can be installed without massive upgrades to, to the grid. With respect to level three stations, they do require a bit more work, that's which is why they're more expensive to, to tap them into the, into the grid itself. I mean, conversations about grid resilience, we'd have to, we'd have to take offline. I don't know if I can speak confidently to that today.
Very good. Thank you.
Randy, you're next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. And first, I just want to thank Jessica and Chad for their presentation today. As they noted, we've recently had an opportunity to meet with them. We see a lot of opportunity to partner and collaborate with the Nuclear Innovation Institute on implementing the Gray County Climate Change Action Plan once that's finalized. We've also shared the action plan with them for their review and comments. So we look forward to, to some of their feedback with respect to that document. With respect to electric vehicles, as has been noted, council has committed to that partnership with Wellington County, Duff from Perth, Huron, Grabers Public Health and the City of Guelph to apply for funding to complete that regional EV charging network feasibility study. So with the information that Nuclear Innovation Institute has, has provided, as, as well as that study, that will provide us with some really good information in terms of where we should strategically locate our EV charging infrastructure that's been flagged as a strategy and action in our climate change action plan. So we hope to hear whether or not we're successful in receiving that funding in the next few weeks. If not, we think there's interest amongst the collective. Uh, if not, we think there's interest amongst the collective to potentially move forward with the project. Uh, because we see that there's great need to move forward with that. Of course, that would be subject to budget approval. Um, the Nuclear Innovation Institute has been plugged in with this partnership, sorry, continuing with the the puns. And the, and the results from the study, a- as I mentioned, along with that, the work that they've completed will will just help to inform where where we should be. Strategically locating uh, these uh, these charging stations. Um, with respect to the question uh, regarding, um, and just sorry, just finding in terms of, I made some notes. Uh, in terms of the, the cost of of the EV infrastructure and. Um, uh, and who should pay for that? Uh, we do see for sure, uh, the municipalities and the county playing a role in in terms of coordinating. Uh, where these strategic could be located. Um, we do see there's opportunities to partner with some of those. Um, uh, private uh, uh, energy companies and others. We've already had some preliminary discussions with folks like. Uh, Embridge, uh, slash Union Gas and others to see if there's opportunities to partner with them. Uh, on on creating that infrastructure throughout, uh, throughout the county. So. And there may be other opportunities as well that we will for sure explore, uh, to make sure that, uh, from a funding perspective. It's not completely on the backs of of existing taxpayers. So. I just wanted to raise that point as well. And with respect to the, um, the overall, uh, infrastructure and whether or not. Uh, our, our grid can handle, uh, that's, that's something we can, uh, explore further with, of course, our. Our manager, climate change initiatives, Linda Swanson and others to to explore that further, and we're happy to work with Nuclear Innovation Institute to find out. More information about that and bring that back, uh, uh, in informed counsel with respect to that. So again, thank you for your presentation, Jessica and Chad. We look forward to to working with you, uh, in the future for sure.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Patterson.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, um, branching out, and sorry, I don't have any puns to go with the branching out, other than when branches fall on wires. Don't touch them. But, um, I'm wondering if Jessica or Chad, if you have any knowledge or like throughout your networking. Of the construction, housing, building industry, are they, um, putting the plugins when they build the new houses?
Through you, Mr. Warden, um, and Chad, I'm not sure if you have additional comment to this, but I I can share that in conversations with. Uh, utility, um, providers, we have had a bit of that conversation, and I think it's a really curious question to ask our developers and our home builders. Um, I certainly expect that if it's, if it's something that you opt for as a new home builder. Um, however, I'm not sure that it's it's happening in all new builds. Chad, do you have any more information on that?
Um, with respect to to building, uh, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. There are, there are different initiatives out there to encourage. Uh, home charging stations. That said, I'd I'd highlight that the technology itself, you know, and and at-home overnight level-one charging station. Uh, you know, every EV comes with a at-home charger that it plugs into a wall outlet. So. I mean, you can charge at home. It's just much slower. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Patterson. Councilor Potter, you're next.
Thank you. Just following up on Councilor Patterson's question, if I could put this through you, uh, Mr. Chair to, uh, to Randy. Uh, could we require that in subdivision agreements that, uh, new home builds include? The infrastructure, uh, even though it may not be as good, uh, include the infrastructure for charging stations in the homes? That would solve a lot of the problem.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden, uh, it it's a great question, and I think it, it builds into one of the. Uh, proposed strategies and actions in our, in our draft climate change action plan in terms of creating a a green building, um, standard. Um, that we could implement through things like new, new development, new subdivisions through subdivision agreements, et cetera. Um, and one of them could be with respect to making sure that at least the, uh, infrastructure is there for someone that be, can add. Uh, an EV charging, um, uh, plugin, uh, easily. Uh, so that's something that we can definitely explore further. Um, uh, with, as part of that green, uh, building standard that is being proposed in our climate change action plan for sure.
Thank you, Councilor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you very much for the presentation this morning. Very interesting. I would like to comment that the Georgian Bluffs, um, Climate Action Committee. One of our recommendations that will be going forward to our council is that we ask in our. Building department that they put in, that we request in all new builds, that there be the rough in. For electric charging stations, so that the basic infrastructure is in place in all new builds going forward. So then the. Resident, whoever owns the property, proceeds with whatever infrastructure they need to put onto that, but just as a way of. Building that right into our building code at the township. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further hands. Uh, so Jessica, when you presented, you talked about, um. Uh, possibility indoor, uh, warm sort of charging, uh, stations. Uh, are there any examples of that? I would think that someone enterprising, as Council Potter said. Uh, would be thinking about a business case for that, maybe a car wash combined with an indoor, uh, charging facility?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't have an example of that at hand, but certainly in our conversations with Plug and Drive, we're always curious. And asking, um, these industry experts about these things. So, so maybe, Chad, maybe that's something that we can add to our conversation, unless Chad has something to add.
Yeah, absolutely, Jess. I think there, there's, out of our conversations with, um, with county councils in the region, there's definitely going to be. Some form of follow-up to this. There's a lot of great questions that the municipal governments are asking, and certainly. You know, validated why, why we should be coming and talking to to county councils as well. We're getting a lot of great feedback on this. Um, to the question of, you know, existing infrastructure, I'm not, I I can't speak confidently that there is something of, you know, a good example to point to. That said, I would, I would highlight that, you know, coming back to that question of why isn't the private, private sector getting involved in this? They absolutely are. Um, Circle K has, you know, made a a huge effort to ramp up EV installations. Um, there's, the en route, uh, system is becoming, you know, a another area where. They're looking at EV charging infrastructure and new innovations in EV charging infrastructure. So I think that, you know, ju- just as we, as we move down the road. Uh, towards, towards twenty thirty-five, you're gonna see more examples of that, of of these innovative charging infrastructure pieces pop up.
Right. Thank you. Councilor Mellon, you'll have the final word.
I was just going to say that I know a, a local, uh, car wash baron has seriously considered about, uh. Installing various means to charge electric vehicles, but on the other hand, I'm thinking. An electrical cord into the side of a vehicle and spraying water all over the place, what could go wrong? Um, but anyway, that's, uh, that's all I had. Thank you.
Right. It'd be shocking, to say the least. Um, all right. Thank you. Sorry.
Very current.
Current for sure. Thank you. Obviously, a very engaging, uh, conversations got us all charged up. And I want to thank you, Jessica and Chad, for joining us today.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
All right. That was a lot of fun, actually. Um, I do enjoy the puns. We're back to item number, uh, three now. I could see the smoke coming out of some ears, actually, people trying to think of these puns. Uh, we're back to item number three, which is a notice of motion by, uh, Councilor McLean, uh, seconded by Councilor Mackey. Uh, so Councilor McLean, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council, and, uh, I think pretty, pretty much the notice of motion is pretty self-explanatory. As we have known in the past, that, uh, this area does have, is under serviced and, uh. I felt it sort of proven that we do bring a report to sort of, uh, look at it closer and and bring some recommendations back. I know other areas over the years have, uh, had, had increase in services. I know with regards to Chatsworth and South Gate, and I think even with the Blue Mountains. Regards to the ski hill have increased services. So, again, I think it wasn't his, well, definitely has been identified as an underserved area, so. I don't know if there's any other questions, but, uh, certainly, uh, I hope I get to support from County Council to bring a report back. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Comments, um, Madam C L. Oh, you're muted.
But I'm sorry about that. I wonder if council would be okay if Kevin McNabb made a couple of comments.
Oh, absolutely. Kevin?
Morning, Warden, County Council. I guess I just, uh, ask, uh, your permission just to make a suggestion. We've never done this before in Gray County. Um, I've been here since two thousand and four. And I know a number of other municipalities, paramedic services have done this. They went to an external consultant, and where they've looked at, uh, call volumes, you know, growth and population, area. If we're best positioned and stuff like that. And then also even in consideration of new models of care that are coming up and other, you know, means of delivering service. If something would that be more prudent, instead of looking at just one area of the county, is to look at our system as a whole? It's something we could budget for in twenty twenty-two and, uh, do early in twenty twenty-two. Uh, again, I just put that out for consideration, and that way we would, you know, have a wholesome look. Not just in the first next year or two, but also we could go like ten years and grow. We've seen significant call volume increases, we're seeing increases in population. And we do have areas that are, you know, that are, you know, with distance is a problem for us, but. I think to bring all those metrics together under the review of an expert, I think would be very good.
Any other comments? Uh, Councilor Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, uh, I concur with, uh, Mr. McNabb. I think that would be a very good idea to get a wholesome look of the whole county. But my question, uh, direct, directly to, uh, Kevin is, do you, do you have any idea what the cost might be?
Yeah, I, I think you're probably in the, uh, forty to fifty thousand dollars for something like that. I haven't asked the different sizes. It may be less. I don't think it'd be much more, but, uh, like, it may be less. I just, uh, that's just off the top of my head, but. I guess the thing is, when we put a, a vehicle in somewhere for twenty-four hours, you want to have the biggest impact. Like, that's one point four million every year. And, uh, like, just to have that direct guidance, uh, you know. Just having all that fulsome look, and I think that planning, I think, would help me too, you know, having that expert that, yeah. Again, we, we know our area the best, but, you know, we can bring that information to them. But to have them lay it over all that other information and and that, I think, will be very helpful.
Thank you. And and just as a follow-up, if I might, Mr. Warden, I presume, or would presume, that any study of that nature would. Uh, encompass, uh, coverage from any of our neighbors that would encroach into Gray County as well, would it not? I'm thinking Wellington County serves the the bottom, the southwest corner of the.
Yeah, and I, I think that that could be looked at. Um, I think the thing is, and and we do have, you know, primarily, we, we, we do have areas that respond into the county, just like. We responded to other counties.
Right.
We, because of the, the other municipalities, just because there's a car in a certain municipality, doesn't mean it's not sitting halfway somewhere into their municipality. It makes it another ten or fifteen kilometers. We can't always rely upon it. So, we, we try not to make those decisions based upon that. But it is, it is a consideration.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to call the question? You know, everyone have their say. Is that, oh, Councilor McQueen and. Councilor McQueen.
Uh, well, thank you, and, uh, certainly, uh, I'm not opposed to getting a, a, a broad-based, um. Report back, and, um, and that could come through recommendations from this notice of motion that that comes through, and maybe there's a bit of a high level or, or. A bit of a Gray County, uh, status up to here, and then maybe that's the recommendations to go for. I will say that, uh, yesterday when we were, and I think, uh, Councilman Mellon makes a really good point with regards to our bordering. Areas, because, uh, I know, uh, you know, with regards to. The Green Highlands and and the Blue Mountains, there is, um, what they call the escarpment, and not only, not all roads run more south east-west because of, uh. Physical challenges and and, uh, land landscapes, but. It was interesting yesterday when we were in our tour with the MTO, and, uh, we had stopped at Collinwood. To have a chat with the ministry, and lo and behold, there was an ambulance, uh, noise, and as it went by. Uh, the, um, trying to get a, uh, metro, that's where we were parked, was a Gray County EMS heading, I presume, to the. Collinwood Hospital. So, there isn't a lot of overlap of our bordering areas, uh, all around Gray County, and, uh, certainly. That would be something that, from that broad base of how that works and and bill service deliveries. And how that's working, but, uh, I just brought up that, that note is just something we saw yesterday, and, uh, certainly, it's, uh, as we know with, uh. As we do have our, our aging, uh, population, as we know, thirty percent between fifty-six and seventy-five right now, as that moves forward. The timing and response time is is very, very important, and moving forward will continue to be very important. Especially from a sector or cohort that is entering into a more substantive, uh, I guess, uh. Area of health that maybe put more demand on our system, right? Just say that in general, but, uh, anyway, uh, those are some of my comments, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. So we, um, Councilor Mellon.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, um, Madam C L. What manner of amendment to this would you like to see to accommodate Kevin's, uh, ask, I guess? Like, I, I don't see in this motion, uh, directly. Like, I, I'm not opposed to the motion itself, but I, I, I do like Kevin's, uh. Suggestions, so I'm just wondering what sort of amendment?
Yeah. I think with, with council support, um, this could be amendment to, uh, staff be directed to complete. Um, further analysis on potential, uh, coverage opportunities, um, across Gray County. And then bring back a report.
So, Madam Clerk, um, thank you, Madam C L, for that. So, Madam Clerk, if, if, uh, it's agreeable, I would, uh, propose that amendment to the motion.
That's fine. Actually, that's what I was, Kim took the words right out of my mouth. Um, I didn't know also, because there was discussion about including this in the twenty twenty-two budget. If that would be an additional clause for council's consideration, that this item be included in part of the twenty twenty-two budget, um, discussions. Um, if you're, uh, agreeable to including that, uh, Council Millen as the.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Looking for a seconder for that, uh, motion. Uh, Councilor Columbus, seconds, and the discussion on the amendment. That's the case, then we'll call the question on the amendment, amendment. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, the amendment carries. I guess we. Don't need, Madam, um, Clerk, we don't need to vote on the main motion now, do we?
We do need to vote on the main motion because it's just the second clause that has been amended?
Correct. Okay. Uh, so, uh, we're dealing now with the, uh, main, um. Main motion as amended, and, uh, Deputy Warden McQueen.
Yeah, thank you, and and sort of zero now on the part of, of the underserviced areas that, uh. Uh, definitely need to, to be identified and and addressed, but I think there's lots of different ways. I think our, our Director EMS, uh. Mr. McNabb has talked about, uh, what's the plan or moving of of EMS, uh, vehicles themselves, or they, they do move out and. You know, definitely as an example with, uh, certainly with the, we have this rodeo coming up at the end of the month, we certainly will be notifying. The, uh, Gray County EMS that this event's coming on, so they see that they know there's certain flexibility and all that. So I just raise that part as, as. There's a lot of possibilities, and I know Kevin has spoken to that as well. So it's just addressing, you know, those underserviced areas. In the sense of how do you address that in certain times and hours, and you try to always move to a better place for response time, and. I think there's a lot of possibilities here, and I just say that more in general. So, thank you.
Anything to add to that, Kevin? Otherwise, we'll call the question.
No, I, I, I think that's correct, like. There's lots of considerations in this, but I think this would be a way to look at the system as a whole and bring it all together under one, uh. And I, and 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 our, our goal at the end of the day is to have our fastest response time, most efficient as possible.
Thank you. Okay, it's time to call the question. Is there anyone opposed, uh, to the motion as it has been amended? See no hands, so it carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we're down now. Sorry, did I miss something? Well, okay, we're down now to item number five, and dealing with the consent, uh, agenda, and then I'm gonna. Justice Council decides the question, but we take a break before we get into, um, seven. So is there anything that needs to be, uh, pulled from the consent agenda? Uh, Councilor, so ever.
Yes, I'd like to pull item B, the, uh, report on the Clark's Brick Dome.
Thank you very much. Um, I don't see any other hands. So with that said, I'm going to, um. Sent agenda has been moved by Councilor Columbus and seconded by Councilor Robinson. Anyone opposed to that? And so it's been amended, but I can be pulled out. No hands, so it is carried. Thank you very much. So we will take, uh, a break. It's now eleven thirty. Can we come back at eleven forty? With that, eleven forty, we'll see you there. Sure. Put second here. Okay. Welcome back, everyone. We're now on to item seven A. On corporate financial update near end projection as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We have Mary Lou and Sue on deck. Uh, this item's been moved by Counselor Robinson. And, uh, seconded by Counselor Mackey. Mary Lou and Sue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. This report provides a financial update based on financials to June thirtieth with a projection to the end of the year. The motion also refers to the Gray Roots General Store construction budget shortfall. That was discussed in quarterly purchasing report F R C W fifteen twenty-one. As the purchasing report did not request a motion for the means of funding the shortfall, that motion is included in the resolution for this report. So the report provides dialogue in each functional area, hitting the highlights of significant items in the respective budgets. Attached to the report is a numerical summary broken down into the operating capital budgets. At this point, staff projects an operating deficit of two hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and a capital surplus of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. For an overall combined surplus of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. And just as a means of comparison, the two thousand and twenty-one levy is sixty-two point three million dollars. So the current projected surplus represents zero point six two percent of the levy. The next financial update will be based upon September financials and is scheduled to be presented to committee on November twelfth. So highlights from the report are as follows. For the administration budget, uh, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred dollar operating surplus. Is projected largely a result of staffing vacancies and changes, reductions in staff training, conferences, travel, et cetera. Investment income is projected to end the year, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred dollars under budget. This will not result in a shortfall as the transferred reserve will be reduced or could be offset by the use of COVID funding if it's available. The IT capital budget will have a shortfall of approximately thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. And this is discussed in a staff report later in the agenda. Staff proposes using information services surplus and this will result in a six thousand dollar shortfall. As a result of one capital project that came in over budget. Council is projected to have a seventy-eight thousand dollar surplus as the result of virtual meetings and lower expenses for travel means and accommodations. The information services budget, as I mentioned, under administration is expected to have savings that will offset the IT capital budget. And after this is taken into account, a thirty-one hundred dollar surplus is projected. Weekly indemnity and workers' compensation budgets, both of these budgets are self-insured plans. H R staff calculates premiums to be charged out to departments based on best estimates and historical trends. These sources of revenue pay the cost of the plans. The weekly indemnity budget is expected to have a surplus of fifty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars if claim numbers and costs remain consistent for the remainder of the year. Workers' compensation is provided to have a deficit of three hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. This is the result of the number of claims and the duration of these claims as well as projections for the remainder of the year. The H R department proposes to add one F T E to the staffing complement in the two thousand and twenty-two budget to assist in managing these claims. If considering weekly indemnity and workers' compensation together, the projection is a shortfall of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. This shortfall could be funded from their respective reserves that have a projected year-end balance of fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars and three point one million dollars. Assessment, the cost from impact will be on budget. Provincial offenses estimates a ten thousand dollar surplus after cost sharing with Bruce County. This is the result of revenue trending higher than budget and we've seen ticket volume is two hundred and forty-one tickets higher than the same point in two thousand and twenty-one. This department has also seen savings from not being open to the public, offset by higher mailing and form costs. The health unit, Markdale Hospital and Commitment to Georgian College budgets are all on track. Property. A surplus of thirty thousand dollars is anticipated as a result of staffing changes, savings and maintenance costs with the administration building being closed to the public. The capital budget is estimated to have a five thousand dollar shortfall as a result of unbudgeted heating and cooling repairs. Taxation and grants, a projection for supplementary taxation and write-offs will not be available in tax adjustment. Until tax adjustment estimates are provided by local municipal staff later in the year. Planning, agriculture, forestry and trails anticipate balance operating and capital budgets. Economic development and tourism, active for, uh, projects and operating budget surplus of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred. And a balanced capital budget. Tourism projects their budgets for operating capital will be sufficient for the year. Gray Roots, an operating budget surplus of seventy-six thousand, five hundred is projected with savings from staffing changes to reduce cleaning costs. And the postponement of the traveling exhibit. After considering the sources of funding for the shortfall in the general store budget that I've mentioned that is in the motion. The remainder of the capital budget is on target. Social Services, which captures Ontario Works and Children's Services. Uh, overall, the budget for Ontario Works and Employment Support projects a surplus of a hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. This department has made note that caseload is three hundred and seventy cases less than anticipated and that's attributed to. Uh, people being on Canada Recovery Benefit and it is expected that this caseload will increase when C R B ends this fall. Children's Services has supported frontline workers and providing care to school-age children for four months in the first half of the year. That has estimated cost of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Fee subsidy savings will be directed to support operators and home childcare providers with additional costs as a result of COVID. As a result, the Children's Services Budget projects a twelve thousand, eight hundred dollar surplus. The total sur- projected surplus for the Social Services Department totals a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. Housing is projecting a thirty thousand dollar surplus from the nonprofit subsidy portion of this budget. A shortfall in tenant-related revenue estimated to be fifty thousand is being offset by savings in salaries and benefits of forty thousand. As well as savings and other individual operating budget line items. The capital budget is on target with projects being rebudgeted into two thousand and twenty-two as a result of COVID and tender results. Long-term care, the projected year-end results for the long-term care department were discussed in the financial report to the Long-Term Care Committee Management on July twenty-seventh. And those minutes have been, uh, already approved by council. The Long-Term Care Administration Budget is sufficient to year-end. The operating budgets for the three care homes have a combined, combined projected shortfall of six hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred dollars. Reductions in ministry funding and staffing costs are the driving factors behind this projection. Each of the capital budgets is expected to end the year on target with some projects carry over two thousand and twenty-two as a result of COVID. Paramedic services, this budget may have a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar shortfall from non-wage costs. If the full budget for wages and benefits is required. Increased costs for fuel, few significant vehicle and stretcher repairs, professional fees and uniform costs are the primary factors for the projected shortfall. The funding allocation for the core budget, which is the land ambulance side, matches the budget. We've been notified that we will receive approximately seven point eight million dollars in two thousand and twenty-one. Wages and benefit costs were on budget to June thirtieth. Staff is monitoring lost time. As well as vacation usage and is reviewing hours to ensure maximum claim entitlements are received for COVID and vaccine distribution programs. The budget was prepared before the Community Paramedicine for Long-Term Care Project was approved. This provides an additional one million dollars in revenue and expenditures for the year. This is a separate budget and reporting from the Community Paramedicine Program. That has been in place for a number of years. It has a three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar budget in two thousand and twenty-one. With the exception of the debenture for the Chatsworth Station and transfers to reserve. The capital budget for paramedic services is funding from reserve and proceeds from the sale of used equipment. The capital budget is on target. Ambulances were ordered early in the year and delivery has been delayed as a result of COVID. The revised ETA date is now early two thousand and twenty-two. For transportation services, uh, they project a fourteen thousand, two hundred dollar operating budget deficit resulting from fuel costs. Individual vehicle and, uh, cleaning protocols as a result of COVID and the review of domes. These costs have been offset by savings from staffing changes. The capital budget is estimated to have a six hundred and ninety thousand dollar surplus from projects that were tendered early in the year. And is offset by the unbudgeted repairs to domes. And I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mary Lou. There's a question from Councilor Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and, uh, thank you, Mary Lou, for your report. A lot of, uh, good information there. In regards to the EMS, uh, operating budget, will that, uh, transfer from the province that they have, uh, uh, agreed, uh. Is coming, will that get us to the fifty-fifty, uh, funding agreement level?
Through you, Mr. Warden. No, it will not.
Are we going to get cloaks?
I'll, I'll bring back, I'll give you a calculation later. Um, the, the short answer to this is. The current year's funding is based on last year's approved budget adjusted for P S A. So they will fund things like future employment benefit costs, future W S I B anticipated costs, um. Vacation accruals. Um, they fund our equipment or our capital to the extent of our annual amortization. Which is of course a historical. So when we buy an ambulance and we anticipate it's going to last six years. We've paid for it upfront and they're giving us a sixth a year. So we'll get the final amount in the year that we're replacing the ambulance. Um, there used to be an inflationary component that ceased in about two thousand and nineteen. So when we prepared the two thousand and twenty-one budget, they give a template on how to calculate the costs. And what their revenue share will be. So as a result of filling out what they call their planning form for two thousand and twenty-one last year. We knew, we had a pretty good idea of where we would be with our revenue from them and it was within, I think, eighty-nine dollars. Which was rounding when we did the budget. So they're always behind.
Right. So I, if I might, Mr. Warden, so I guess, I guess my question then is, are, are they getting? Better at meeting that fifty-fifty agreement or are they getting worse over time? Where's the trend going?
It, it did improve, but I will, I will use the caveat that they, they base it based on the budget. So if we come in under budget and, um. Say, for example, they were funding forty-eight percent and we were funding fifty-two. If we came in under budget and. It, their share would have been forty-seven percent and ours fifty-three, then there's an adjustment. If we end up with actuals where our share went to fifty-five percent and their share went to forty-five. They don't provide any additional funding. So it's a, I guess it's a win-win for them. Here's the maximum that we're going to provide you and, um. You adjust your budget accordingly and if you have a deficit as a result of, uh, an increase in modified duty, claims. Fuel, vehicle costs, whatever, um, that's on the county taxpayer.
Right. So I guess you're right. It's a win-win for them, be damned the cost to the taxpayer. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, maybe it's time to call the question on the motion, which, uh, is to receive this report. And with respect to the, uh, Gray Roots, uh, General Store, uh, is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, so next we are dealing with item seven, uh, B. Which is the maintenance of the Mitel Voice Over Internet Protocol, uh, System. It's moved by Counselor Carlton and seconded by Counselor Mackey. Jody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, as you probably know, uh, from me having spoken a couple of times this year about capital budgets. Um, we have been looking at making some investment in our phone system for a few years now. Um, we started setting aside some capital over the past several years. And we currently, uh, intend to make some investment in the phone system within the next, uh, couple. We've also engaged a consultant this year. It's Nielsen I T and they're reviewing our telephony accounts and our technology gaps in our current system. Um, that's both the tools that we have available to us now that we may not be making full use of and any functionality that might be available in the market in different systems. And they're going to be, uh, providing their report, um, this, this autumn that will include technology investment recommendations over the next several years. So what we're looking for here is essentially a one-year renewal of our support contract with, uh, Mitel, which is the system used for voice over internet phone systems. And that would ensure we have the necessary system of support until we have a firm plan for our telephony investment. So by renewing, what we get, um, is essentially access to software and security updates. And a service level agreement on parts and replacement, um, or, or support with Mitel. Over the past three years, we have used support through, uh, through the vendor, the reseller, which is on target and Mitel on nearly a monthly basis. And sometimes that has been in critical components of the system such as a switch at long-term care or even our, our, uh. Hardware at our primary data center. If we weren't to renew, we would, uh, still be able to purchase hardware updates and technical support. Um, but we would lose essentially the warranty on the equipment. So unless it's very new, um, some of it would not be replaced. Unless we paid for it and we certainly wouldn't have that service level agreement. But more importantly, we wouldn't have access to the software and security updates. So we'd be assuming a fair amount of risk, um, at both prolonged, uh, service outages if we did have any interruption to service. But also that cybersecurity aspect, if we're not keeping the system patched and up to date. These type of maintenance agreements on software and hardware components are, are fairly standard in the industry. Um, in terms of the finances, uh, this, the cost of the, of a single year renewal is, uh, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. That's including our portion of the, uh, the H S T. As it currently stands, we would be able to cover, um, some of this with surplus, um, anticipated surplus in the I S operating budget. And any shortfall we would hope to pick up, um, from the I T infrastructure reserve. Um, so that's it. In a nutshell, are there any questions?
Also, I do not see any questions. Uh, that's the case, then I'm going to call the question. Uh, anyone opposed to the motion before you? No hands, so that is carried. Thank you very much, Jody.
Thank you.
Excellent. We're going to deal with item, uh, seven C that puts Heather on deck. Uh, we're dealing with the, um. September thirtieth National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. It is moved by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Mellon. Heather, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Um, many of you will have received this at your local municipalities. The federal government has established National, September thirtieth as the National Day for Truth, Truth and Reconciliation. In the past, it's been known as Orange Shirt Day. This is a day to reflect on the past and share stories and history of indigenous peoples, their families, their communities. We can do this through open discussions, exhibits, storytelling. And as well, if approved by council, the Every Child Matters flag will be flown at all, uh, Gray County locations. And the flag lowered to half mast in recognition of this national day. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission Report was published in June twenty fifteen and contained ninety-four calls to action. Uh, within it to remedy the legacy of residential schools in Canada and to advance the process of reconciliation across Canada. Recent discoveries of remains and unmarked graves and residential schools have once again brought this issue to the forefront. Gray County has begun its own journey of reconciliation and support our indigenous peoples. A land acknowledgement was recently passed by council and is included in our council meetings, significant Gray County events. And part of introduction to corporate documents such as the recently adopted Forest Management Plan. As well, in April this year, council supported the signing of the Declaration of Mutual Commitment and Friendship with the Wickodon. Indigenous Friendship Center as part of the provincial commitment strengthening relationships between Ontario's indigenous and non-indigenous communities. A move that was supported across the province by A M O. And I want to thank Jill Patterson, our manager at Gray Roots, uh, for helping me out with some of the, um. Exciting ideas that are happening in Gray Root.
exciting ideas that are happening in Gray Roots. They are producing a physical display of the land acknowledgement at the entrance to the museum as a recognition for the long-established Indigenous presence in this area. They're also working with community stakeholders to form an Indigenous Advisory Circle aimed at guiding the development of Indigenous-focused projects in the future. Gray County's recognition of the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, supported by AML, is one further step in Gray County's journey to acknowledge, remember, support, and honor our Indigenous people across Gray County, Ontario, and Canada. I'm happy to take any questions for that, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Counselor Mill, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Heather, for your work and other staff on this very important motion. I think it's most appropriate and any opportunity we have to educate ourselves and reflect on the history of our area and of all of our people is very valuable and I will be supporting this. Absolutely. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Robinson, and I'll come to you, Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, Clerk Morrison, those words certainly resonated and very much appreciate the time you have taken to prepare that very important presentation that you provided. I wholeheartedly support the the motion that is before council. There is many opportunities for learning and education and sharing stories. And I would encourage my colleagues around the virtual table to support the motion at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to tell kind of councils that this motion, similar, very similar to that, was 100% supported during the council last night. So just so you know.
Very good. I do not see any other hands, so I will then call the question on the motion to to recognize September 30th as the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing no hands, that is Carrie. Thank you very much. We're on to item 7B now. That puts Randy on deck and we're dealing with the survey partnership with the University of Guelph. This item's been moved by Counselor Keating and seconded by Counselor Carlton. Randy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good afternoon, everyone. The purpose of this report is to make you aware of a joint partnership between Gray County and the University of Guelph to implement a COVID survey countywide to Gray County residents. As we know, rural residents throughout Ontario have been impacted by the ongoing pandemic and have been impacted in ways that have not been fully realized. Dr. Leith Deacon from the University of Guelph has embarked on a research project to gather experiences from rural residents in Ontario, and this survey is a key piece to that research. The survey aims to find out how the pandemic has changed the daily lives of rural residents and how residents think it will change their lives moving forward. The survey examines things like well-being, social behavior, day-to-day living, and risk management. The results from the survey will be helpful for a variety of projects and may assist with future decision-making by both the county and local municipalities regarding ongoing pandemic recovery efforts. Steve Furness and Brad Noble have been working on this project, but they had some other meetings they had to attend to today. So they send their regrets. Kimberly Tremblay has also been assisting with this project, and I just want to thank them for their work on this exciting partnership. This is a joint initiative between the Social Services Department, Economic Development, and the Planning Department. The survey has already been completed in Huron and Perth Counties and will be completed in another six counties, including Gray County. It's currently being refined, the survey, by county staff and Professor Deacon with implementation by mail plans later this month. There are set questions that the University of Guelph wants to maintain to ensure consistency across the surveys being done. However, there are opportunities to add additional questions and Gray County staff are working with Dr. Deacon to include questions related to things like children's services, housing, and economic development-related questions. The funding for the project is primarily being funded by OMAFRA through the Ontario Agri-Food Innovation Alliance in the amount of $15,000 for our area. And the county is providing an additional $5,000 to assist with the costs of the mail-out so that we can send this to as many Gray County residents as possible. That $5,000 will be shared equally between the existing budgets of the Economic Development Planning and Social Services Departments. The research results will be collected and analyzed by the University of Guelph and Gray County will have access to the results. And as mentioned, the results will help to fill an important gap in our understanding of how the pandemic has impacted Gray County residents. Once the project has been completed, Dr. Lee plans to attend Gray County Council to present the findings and, of course, to discuss the results of the study once all the work has been finalized. So at this stage, the recommendation is just to receive this report for information, but we want to make council aware in case you start hearing questions from residents about the survey once it goes out the mail, hopefully later this month. So happy to take any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Very much, Randy. I agree. These partnerships have been very, very helpful to us and productive. Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Randy. I'm really looking forward to the results of this survey, and it may be too soon to ask this question, but I'm wondering if there's any potential or likelihood that the results can be broken down for each lower tier because this information will be really valuable to all of us as we go forward with our recovery efforts.
That's a great question. That was one of our first questions to Dr. Deacon, and there is actually a breakdown of where where the residents, when they're responding, what municipality, local municipality they reside in. So there will be the opportunity to break that down further by local municipalities. So we'll be able to review this not only from, you know, from the various counties that are participating in this project from a regional perspective, but also looking at it from a Gray County lens and right down to a local municipal lens. So we'll be happy to share the results of that. And that's some of the results that we will be able to analyze further through Brad Noble, our Planning Data Analysis Coordinator, once we receive that information and will, of course, share that with local municipalities because we think it'll be important information to have going forward for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think it's time to call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion before you? Seeing no hands, that is Carrie. We're on to item 7E. That puts Jennifer on deck. We're dealing with the the corporate COVID-19 immunization policy. That item's moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor Keating. Jennifer, you have the floor.
Hi, good morning or good afternoon, I suppose it is by now. Provided for your information is our updated immunization policy. I'm hopeful that members of council have had an opportunity to read through that policy. I'm just going to give it a quick once-over. We are referring to this policy as a soft mandatory policy. We've requested vaccination certificates for all vaccinated staff members of Gray County, excluding long-term care. Long-term care employees have been through this process for many months due to different Ministry of Health directives for our long-term care workers. So this policy essentially matches what our long-term care workers have been providing and have been using as policy for the past few months. The mandatory immunization policy requests that staff members provide either their vaccination or a medical exemption, or if neither is provided, staff members will then receive an education training session and will then be required to complete a rapid antigen test at regular intervals. The regular intervals that have been recommended by Dr. Era and the Public Health Unit are twice weekly right now. That could increase in frequency if we are in an outbreak situation again. And this policy is in effect, and we've requested that all staff members send us their proof of vaccination, if they have that by September 7th, which was two or three days ago. The policy is a policy that you can see throughout the province. There are two different types of policies right now. You have the soft mandatory and the mandatory mandatory. We are not in an outbreak situation in all of our facilities right now. So we felt that this softer approach was a better approach for our staff members. Not sure if anyone has any questions on the policy itself.
Counselor Mill, who has a question?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Jennifer, for the report. The policy is is very well thought out, I think. But my question is, does this policy apply to county council members? And if it does not, why not?
Three, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Mill. No, this policy does not apply currently to county council members. As elected officials, you're not considered an employee. And if council members would like to create or suggest the creation of their own policy, I'm happy to assist with that. But the reason we did not include council members in this policy is because you do not fit into the employment category of an employee. You're an elected official.
Well, and thank you for that. If I might, Mr. Warden, thank you for that response, Jennifer, and it was absolutely what I anticipated, but on the face of it, in my mind at least, it's all wrong for council to sit here and improve a policy and say, but it doesn't apply to us. That is wrong in my mind, and I think we should voluntarily agree to comply with this policy. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Mackey, you are next.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and Jennifer, thanks for all the work you've done on this policy. Just in light of Dr. Era's comments this morning in regards to the medical exemptions, I'm just wondering, you know, in an attempt to try and educate our staff, if it would be wise to add verbiage about how rare it is to actually achieve a medical exemption. I'm just wondering if that section of our policy, whether there might be an opportunity just to communicate that with our staff. And I am certainly willing to provide my double proof of vaccination to the county when they make the request. Thanks.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Mackey. I personally don't believe we should be making an opinion on the medical exemptions. I think that gets into position of giving medical advice, and this policy is not meant to. The College of Physicians and Surgeons has provided physicians with advice and guidance on what is a medical exemption, and I believe Dr. Era and the Public Health Unit have as well discussed with medical professionals. I think folks are going to need to speak with their physicians, and I would be very wary to put in any sort of medical advice in this policy.
Thanks for that response, Jennifer. I guess I wasn't looking at putting in medical advice, just putting in that they're very rare. That's not advice, in my opinion. Thanks.
Okay. Next is Counselor Potter.
Thank you, and just agreeing with Counselor Mill that that council should should play by the same roles as employees in this case. I also would like to see it apply to anybody who wants to attend a council meeting as a delegation or anyone else. If they're going to be in the same room or in the county building with our employees, then I think they should be required to show proof of vaccination. So I would extend Counselor Mill's suggestion to that far, once we start having in-person meetings again.
Thank you, sir. Madam CIO, no, Madam Clerk. Just picking up on a bit of a trend here. What would be the process that the council would follow if we wanted to extend? I know we're having a discussion about the corporate policy for staff, but if in keeping with the trend that seems to be coming forward here, people want to extend it to council and visitors, would we need to create a separate policy or could we make an amendment to this existing policy?
I think, and certainly Kim or Jennifer can jump in at any time, if council is, would like to voluntarily voluntarily follow the staff policy that is before you today, I don't think there's any concerns from our perspective of you providing that information to HR for your records here.
And with respect to Counselor Potter's suggestion about extending it to visitors of the county building or county facilities?
That's a different matter altogether, and I'm going to, I see our CIO has her hand up. I'm going to leave that with her, too.
Yeah, I'm going to acknowledge you, Kim, but I apologize to councilors whatsoever on this side, but Kim, I'll acknowledge you now.
You're on mute, Kim.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would, one of the things in the policy is that if you are not vaccinated or you do not wish to disclose your vaccination status, then you're being subject to rapid testing. I would be concerned that we might be attracting a difficult situation if we said that you couldn't attend a council meeting and couldn't be in the room without being vaccinated. I think what we could do is, though, suggest that people who want to be in chambers, which is a small enclosed space potentially for an extended period of time, we might ask that people undergo a rapid test before being in chambers. I wonder if that, if they didn't have proof of vaccination, could you be tested? I'd just like to give people a choice, the same way that we're giving our our staff and the people that are coming into our buildings as contractors, et cetera, a choice. Our ultimate goal is to make sure that everybody is as safe as we can possibly make them, and I wonder if that would be a way forward.
Counselor Potter?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I know that we're all about giving people choices, but I would like the choice not to have to sit in a room with people that may or may not have a dangerous virus. And I, so I think that requiring at least that they wear a mask and be socially distanced would not be too much to ask.
Okay, I'm going to come back to what we do with all of this, but let's turn next to councilors whoever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. The, yeah, and I agree with Deputy Mayor Potter and the other councillors that I think we should have a policy, a separate policy, obviously, but it could mirror, it'd be exactly the same as the one for staff. And I certainly agree with the CIO that, you know, there should be choice, but the choice should be, you know, you get tested, you wear a mask, and, you know, maybe we make sure that those that aren't vaccinated sit, you know, in a unvaccinated person's area. So, you know, if people that are, have chosen to be vaccinated, they can sit in on one side of the aisle, much like a wedding. You have one family on one side and the other family on the other side, you know, or something to that effect because I know that people are concerned and, you know, certainly being vaccinated does reduce your risk of transmission. It's not zero. You can still get ill and transmit, but the odds are much less. And, you know, there's a lot of talk about rights, but I would point out that automobile accidents kill about 10, only one, less than one-tenth of the people annually than COVID did over the first year of COVID. And there are all kinds of restrictions on motor vehicles. You need a license. You can't speed. You can't drink, and you have to wear a seatbelt. So, you know, I, not, you know, for something that's 10 times more deadly to have to wear a mask and get tested, I don't see the argument really that that is, you know, impinging on anyone's rights more than we already have in all areas of life.
So Madam Clerk, is it appropriate that we simply deal with this by saying that staff take note of the council's comments and will bring back some sort of a recommendations around council and the public, or do we need a motion?
I, thank you, Mr. Warden. I think an amendment to this would be appropriate, that staff bring back a report on two policies or guidelines, one related to council and one related to the general public. I think staff needs a bit of time to do some research on what else is, who else is doing what out there. who who else is doing what out there, and so that there's some consistency. So I think because it is germane to the the policy itself, and we're just looking for more information from a council perspective and a public perspective, I think an amendment would be most appropriate.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Desai, you're next.
Thank you, Warden. Next, um, the one question that I do have is, would it be beyond the policy, I guess, or would it be impossible to add a a portion to the policy that that requires council members to adhere to this particular policy as well? That was my first question. My second question is with regards to proof of vaccination before entering the county building. We've seen that increasingly, a lot of democracy, a lot of public services are able to be offered online through Zoom, and I I don't see any reason why that cannot continue beyond COVID. If I, on September twenty-third, if I wanted to go to a restaurant and I didn't have proof of vaccination, I wouldn't be allowed to enter into a restaurant. So we need to ensure that that same safety is extended to staff in in the county setting as well. So I I do perhaps take a more hard line stance on this, perhaps in some of my colleagues, but I do feel that it is important. I saw a meme late yesterday that we don't remember that, well, I I don't remember anyways, the times when you'd be asked of whether whether you wanted to sit in the smoking or non-smoking section, because as a society, we decided that smokers should be allowed to smoke freely, just not in an area that endangers other people with secondhand smoke. And I think it's a, it's a bit of a parallel to this. So in Great Highlands, we've moved to a hybrid meeting where I know the first meeting in September, three members of council were sitting in council chambers and four members attended remotely. So that is still something that can that can happen going forward. I know the the number of times I've bothered the the C A O with, you know, when are we getting back in chambers? And that that has been a consideration for members who do want to attend virtually, to be able to continue attending virtually. So I don't think we're really stopping anyone from partaking in in council democracy or partaking in public services. And so I do think that a proof of vaccination to come into county buildings should perhaps be a a requirement. But I I I do believe that a an amendment will come forward or a follow-up report will come. So I'll I'll leave that in staff's hands in 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 the form of these comments. Thank you.
Madam C A O?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. There are a number of legal considerations around all of this, and and I think it if council would give us a little bit of time, just to ensure that we've done all of our due diligence here, we can come back with the the best advice that's available at this time. I think you all can appreciate that this is a a very much an evolving area of discussion, and we want to make sure that we're doing the the right things. So we will work on this and we'll bring back some information for you to consider.
So, Madam C A O, the clerk has recommended an amendment to the motion that we have before us. Would you suggest that we not amend, but simply leave it in your hands and something will come back?
That's absolutely fine.
Okay. Councilor Mackey, you're next.
Thanks, Warden, and through you to either Kim or Jennifer, just wondering if you have any sense on the percentage of the population of staff that are currently vaccinated? And the second question is the the rapid antigen testing kits that are going to be required. Is that funded through the province or the health unit, or will that be a cost to Gray County? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Warden. As far as percentage rates for staff, you're sitting at around just over seventy percent currently. We are still expecting more vaccination certificates to come in, and we do know there are a certain amount of staff that are within the course of vaccination, so maybe have received their first dose, but not their second, or fourteen days haven't passed, so we expect that to go up in time. And our long-term care partners, our long-term care staff are resting above ninety percent. And as far as the rapid antigen testing, we believe those will be provided through the province. As of right now, they have been provided for our paramedic group and our long-term care group. Dr. Era has assured us they will be made available to us as well, and we are anticipating these will be take-home kits. We will be providing training for staff on how to use that. Our paramedics staff are going to help us conduct that training, and then staff will be sent home with these kits.
Very good. Councilor Mackey?
Yes, thank you. Just a follow-up in regards to Jennifer's response around the take-home kits. What sort of verification will there be then that the the test was accurately provided to us?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Councilor Mackey. Right now, we're considering, much like the self-screening that we do daily to attend work, our COVID self-screening, it will be a similar self-screening option where folks can go online and verify that they have completed the test and that they have received a negative result, or conversely, that they've received a positive result and are now attending for a proper P C R test. There is in the works some software that can you can upload a picture of your test. We're not sure how common those will be. It's an evolving I T resource that we may be able to avail ourselves to. But for right now, our intent is to do a screening option for those staff members, and we trust our staff members. We have trusted everyone with self-screening daily, and we will take that same attitude towards the the rapid antigen testing.
Okay. Councilor Potter, you're next.
Thank you, and I I wonder if we should go ahead with an amendment that would require members of council to abide by this policy and then give the C A O and her staff a chance to look into the legal implications, because I know there are there are issues around whether we can actually deny the public access to a public building. So so I I think we have time to look into that, and I I think she's right that we do need to consider the ramifications of that. So, but I have no issue at all, going back to Councilor Millen's original suggestion that we that we amend this to include all of council and ask staff to look into the implications regarding public attending council meetings.
Okay, so I'm turning to you, Madam Clerk. Is that like an amendment by way of motion, and do I require a seconder?
Through you, Mr. Warden, I would recommend that it is a formal motion, an amendment to the main motion, that staff be directed to bring back a report on COVID nineteen immunization policy relative to Gray County council members, and a second one on the public. And that way, that will give staff time to gather as much information and legal considerations as possible. In the meantime, if council members want to voluntarily provide their information to human resources, I think Jen's nodding, so I think that's perfectly fine.
I'm hearing that Councilor Potter, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, I think he is suggesting that we amend today's motion to include council, sort of it's mandatory on council as it is for staff, and as well amending it to allow for staff to bring back a report and recommendations with respect to the public. Have I misstated your intention, Councilor Potter?
No, that's exactly it, Warden.
Okay, so if that is the case, then I would need a seconder, and that's seconded by Councilor Desai. And so we will now have discussion on the amend amendment. Is there any discussion on that? I do not see any hands, so I will call the question on the amendment, which is to make it mandatory on council and to ask staff to bring back a report with respect to the public. Anyone opposed to that? Seeing none, that is carried. Now we're back onto the main motion as amended. Councilor Desai, you have your hand up.
Sorry, Warden, I had my hand up to second the the amendment.
My apologies. Okay, are we all talked out on this? Are people looking for a surge in energy? Sorry, I'm still going back on the electric vehicle thing. Okay, then I will call the question, sort of like that. Is there anyone opposed to the main motion as amended? And there is no one opposed, so I'm going to say that that, too, is carried. Thank you very much. We're going to go back now to item six B, which is the Clarksburg Dome issue. That is going to be moved by Counselor was that, so ever. We need a seconder to put that on the floor. Counselor Potter and Counselor Soever, you have the floor.
Yes, I pulled this from the consent agenda, because I was kind of disappointed it wasn't on the consent agenda, because there there's a number of issues in this report that that warrant, you know, some close examination by council. It is a hundred and ten thousand dollar hit. And as council will recall, that as recently as July, we were, we were talking about forty thousand dollars in repair, and in looking at this report, and it's quite a detailed report by Mr. Knight here. He he notes that both with it, in the collapsed debris and the still-standing panels was the fact that much plywood had been replaced as part of the twenty twenty re-roofing, and that roof, re-roofing was done in late twenty twenty. Moreover, much of the new plywood appeared to be inadequately installed, in that the plywood is not glued to the lumber framing. Plywood nailing is much inferior to the standard of nailed domes. Some plywood is installed as other than full sheets, and some plywood is installed with the face screen horizontal rather than vertical, and some plywood is too small to fit in the opening within the panels, and therefore does not and cannot contact the panel's lumber framing. And it says all of these conditions were identified in the writer's March first, twenty twenty-one report. Individually and collectively, they all compromise the structural capacity of the panels containing such defects as well as that of the dome itself. And then there were repairs undertaken in April twenty twenty-one, and, you know, and then there was an inspection which caused this latest report. And in also in the report, it says that overall it's in fair condition, and in with the general appearance of being tired, the large quantity of new fresh plywood is visually misleading. It is generally not adequate to serve its intended structural function. So, and then he concludes later on that he's not privy, he says that much of the for issues of decay and damage or deterioration requiring repair were noted. Most, if not all of these would have existed prior to the twenty twenty re-roofing. We are not privy to the details of the twenty twenty contract and do not imply responsibility to any party for these matters not having been addressed. So, you know, what the report says is that, you know, the the dome was re-roofed just one year ago, or or late last year, and the you know, some of the issues were there before, but some appear to have been caused in by the manner in which the re-roofing was done, in that the plywood patches were not properly installed. So my questions were, what are we, what were the terms of the, what is the obligation of the roofing contractor under their contract? And and what are we doing to recover potential damages from the roofing contractor? It's clear that the this engineer, you know, like, where, was the contractor that did the re-roofing? You know, was the contract broad enough that they should fix any issues that weren't fixed? And you know, what were the terms in terms of making sure that the plywood was put in properly? And and how do we check as the counties, who who on county staff signs off on the repairs when they're properly done? Because clearly, in this case, we've got a hundred thousand dollars of expenditure, and 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 some of that may just be a consequence of how the roofing was done.
Okay, I see that Jim Nichol is with us, and I don't know, not.
Is, I'm sorry, it's Jim, are you?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thanks. You and I were trying to connect before this. I will start off answering, and then maybe Jim can jump in with some more of the details. But first of all, the reason why this is on consent is because there was not a specific question or decision for council to make. I approved these repairs on a on an emergency basis, because we were advised by the engineer that there was the potential for the dome to collapse. And that was not something that I was willing to risk. The dome needs to be fixed. We needed to have, we need to have this infrastructure in place. And and we're not in a position at this point in time to be building a new one in in preparation for the the next winter season, nor were we able to identify an alternative location to store the materials. So that's why it went forward as it did. That's why it's on on consent. We wanted you to be aware of of what had happened. Counselor Soever, you are absolutely correct that there are certainly issues with the work that was done, and Jim can speak to the conversations that he's had with the former contractor. It's unfortunate that the Jim is not the manager who who drafted the original tender document, so he will only be speaking to what went out. I think when Pat brought the earlier report back in July, he did comment to council these domes are are quite aged, right? This is a thirty-five-year-old structure. No one builds domes anymore. And within the industry itself, there are a very, very limited handful of people, we come to understand, who really have the in-depth expertise about how dome repairs should be conducted and 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 how they should be maintained. So I think certainly this has been a learning process for all of us as staff. But Jim, I'll let you speak to your discussions with the original contractor.
Sure. As you mentioned, we had a a partial collapse of the dome in February, so we had Jim Knight come and take a look at it. And repairs were done by Ben Peldry, replaced six panels and replaced a truss, repaired the truss. Those repairs weren't related to the Sapphire work, but James Lake noted that the panels weren't glued, the panels that Sapphire, or the plywood that Sapphire replaced, weren't glued. So, when we paid, we got an engineer's report from Sapphire on January eighteenth. Excuse me. And payment was made for the whole back around February nineteenth. That's when we received the but it wasn't until we had the repairs done that we, you knew that Sapphire's work was was deficient. We, James Lake suggested we do another in-depth inspection that we, that you have received to determine the extent of the Sapphire's repair or their deficiencies and the the condition of the dome. That inspection was done July nineteenth. We had a meeting with Sapphire on July twenty-seventh at the Art to Discuss his cost sharing for the deficiencies. So far, he hasn't got back to us on what he's willing to to contribute, but we're, I know not that he's avoiding us, but he said he couldn't. Our first suggestion, I think, was you pay for half the reshingling and for all the plywood, it would have been around sixty thousand dollars that we we suggested. So he hasn't got back to us on that. So that's where we stand right now. There's a one-year warranty on it. As I mentioned, the substantial completion was February second, so we have until probably February second to for the warranty to expire.
Councilor?
Yes, thank you for that. That's, that's good to know. And, you know, I I recognize that, you know, structural integrity of domes is a, it's a complicated thing, and certainly it's like an egg. If you have a crack, then it's no, you know. a circular or an oval structure is very strong until there's one weakness. And then it's kind of like when you have a crack in an egg, it doesn't last very long. So certainly, the, in the selection of Sapphire, did we, did we look at their experience with these kind of jobs or?
Supposedly, the previous maintenance manager had, was familiar with them, and he said they did good work, but I don't think that they were probably good at shingling domes, but not replacing plywood or the structural component of it. And the engineer that they used wasn't, I, I don't think familiar like James Nate or storage systems with the construction of domes. So, and, and you're, you were correct with your comment about why didn't we do a, we should have done a inspection prior to the shingling, and that would have given everybody a a proper footing to bed on it, which we did before the Dundalk and Chatsworth Jonesy, we did some work on them this year and we had the report before they did the work. But, you know, that was an oversight.
Well, that's great to know, you know, I mean, mistakes will happen and we learn from them.
Right. And it's expensive lesson, but.
Most are, that's why you remember them.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. I don't see any other hands. So with that said, I'm going to call the question. Anyone opposed to motion? No hand showing, that is carried. So I am back now, lost my little list here. I think we're on to adjournment, aren't we?
Other business, Mr. Warden, notice of motion and then adjournment.
Is there any other business? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, members of county council, it is with great pleasure that I announce my intention to run for Warden for the year 2022. If elected, it would be my honor to represent, serve, and work tirelessly on behalf of and with members of Gray County Council, staff, and the citizens of Gray County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, any other, other business? Madam CAO?
Thank you. Just in, in follow-up to our earlier discussion, I did want to reconfirm with, with county council that the, the building, this administration building is reopening to the public beginning on Monday on September the 13th. So on a by appointment basis only, as much as we can do that, but certainly we'll be providing counter service to the public. And that was part of the, the rationale and by ensuring that we had a good solid vaccination policy, et cetera. As well, some of you would be aware that this building is a pooling station. And so the, the advanced pools are happening here at the building on, on Friday through Monday this week, and then again on election day. So given that the public will be in and out of the building at, at a much higher level, on those days, we'll probably have only a minimal amount of, of regular staff, but we are working with Elections Canada to ensure that this is conducted as safely as possible.
Thank you, Counselor Visa.
Thank you, Warden. It's, um, the, the last meeting under other business, I did ask this question around when we're coming back in person. And the CAO had mentioned October, but that we were going to endeavor to come back for the second meeting in September. I, my question was regarding the, the integrity of that timeline. If it is, if, if we are any closer to being back in September, or if, if it is still October.
Through you, Mr. Warden. My most recent discussion with, with our communications manager, Rob, is that we will be looking at the first meeting in October. Sorry.
Thank you very much, Warden. Thanks.
You're welcome. I don't see any other hands, so I think we're on to the notices of motion. Seeing none. Finally ready for adjournment. So it is moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor Mill that we now adjourn. And I just want to thank everybody for a meeting that was anything but static. Get it? Anyways. Have a great day, everyone.
Take care.